5:30 PM. Good evening. It's 5:30 PM on Wednesday, June 20, 2024, and this regular meeting of the Sandpoint City Council is now called to order in council chambers at 1123 West Lake Street, Sandpoint, Idaho. For the record, I am Mayor Jeremy Grimm presiding. Also present are Council President Deb Rule, Counselor Joe Spiro, Justin Dick, Kyle Schreiber, and Rick Howarth. Councilwoman Pam Duquette will be joining us in a couple of minutes. Under the city's adopted code of ethics and stability as the presiding officer, I'm to identify law enforcement personnel in the room who will be serving as Sergeant of Arms for this evening's meeting. Tonight, we have Police Chief Corey Coon in the back. If everyone will please stand, we will recite the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First announcements and reports, I'd like to call to the podium Ponderay Mayor Steve Geiger and Steve Gill from the Idaho Department of Environmental Quality, who provide a brief presentation on us for the Black Rock Cleanup, and if you don't know, Steve Gill is a Sandpoint native with multiple generations, and we're lucky that he works for the Idaho Department of Environmental Quality and knows our community so well. Thank you both for being here.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council, and giving us the opportunity to share a little bit about what we are doing in the city of Ponderay. We're going to be talking about the Black Rock area, former smelter. Our city about five years ago received a grant for $800,000. We were one of 11 in the nation, and we were the smallest community to receive it. The city's view on all of this property and everything is to keep it more in its natural space and trails and very minimal amenities. No development of condos, restaurants, or marinas, or anything like that. I do have the greatest historian in the county at my side to give all the pertinent details and particulars of the process and how things will be laid out. So here's the area that we are talking about, the Ponderay Bay Trail. This will be remain in its natural space for the rest of history as the city, thanks to its local option tax dollars, purchased all of the lakefront property in our entire community except one residential lot at the far north end. Other than that, this will be a natural space for the rest of all of us to enjoy forever. What else we got? And so this is just some facts and sheets that you all received, kind of explaining the process and everything about what the site entails and all the testing and everything else that has been completed in the city.
And I'll take it over. Thank you. Thank you very much, Mayor Geiger.
And Steve, maybe just Gil, just for the public who hasn't read the packet, just a real brief, high-level, oh, look at that, history of what this is.
Here we go. We're going down that path. We're looking at newspaper clippings from 1904 and 1905 from Sandpoint when the first group proposed a smelter. A funny note is in the upper right corner, Humbird Lumber Mill had started in 1900, and initially they opposed the smelter because they were afraid of the fumes, they're quite acidic, and that would hurt a lot of the timber. So it was an interesting time, but they got it going, and by 1907, they were starting to smelt and produce ingots of lead and some silver ore, not of the best quality, and hence the initial Panhandle Smelting and Refining Company went bankrupt. Another smelting and refining company called the Idaho Smelting and Refining Company started, and they were able to get roasters, which were another portion of the smelting process. They went bankrupt, and then we had the Ponderay Smelting and Refining Company. And in the end, operations started in June of 1907, ran sporadically for a total of 11 months until 1911, when the site was shut down. The site sent dormant until 1922. And this is a picture from the dock looking at the smelter, and this picture was taken right after it was shut down in 1911. The dock they're standing on, those piers, you can see some of those piers, and that extended out 2,200 feet. The whole idea of a smelter on Ponderay Lake was that the newspapers said, "The lake is the dump," so they were going to bring ore from the Silver Valley by train to Bayview, and they were going to barge it over to the channel, which is clear over by Gold Hill, and then they were going to run this train and take the raw ore and refine it. And the whole idea was that they had some trepidation about American Smelting and Refining Company, which was a SARCO. They didn't want them in the Silver Valley at the time, but in the end, the SARCO went to the Silver Valley, and we know the legacy that occurred there. I mean, the number one silver-producing site in the western United States, but it left a legacy. This site only had 11 months, and there isn't a lot of legacy there, but there is some work that needs to be done. This gives you an idea of sort of the footprint from an old sandborne fire map of the site showing the roasters and the many rail lines and the operation itself. As we forward into history, we look at 1946, and the Army Corps of Engineers Flood Control Act of 1946 put the Corps of Engineers in charge on any time highways, railways, or utility corridors would be damaged by a Corps of Engineers project such as a dam. And so that meant that the Corps would always be in charge, and so the Flood Control Act of 1950 then authorized the construction of the Albany Falls Dam, along with Washington Water Power built both the Cabinet Gorge Dam and Knoxan Rapids Dam concurrently at the same time. Those dams started operating at the lake level back in 1952, and to this day, they're still having some lake level issues. But we won't get into that conversation. So this is a picture, though, of the reason for those Flood Control Act controls of the Corps. This is partway down towards the Panhandle Smelter, and this is a 1971 picture of a slide, sort of the first big slide. It refers to Government Lot 3, Section 11. That's pushing towards the slag pile. This was provided to me by Ross Hall, and Ross also provided another bit of history from April 1974, a second big slide. So what would happen is those old clay banks with the sands and silt would fill up with water, and then they would just have big slumps, and that was pushing on the railroad tracks. I mean, surprising that a railroad track didn't really slide in. So the Corps of Engineers started stabilizing the Ponderay Bay Trail that we call it today in 1964 initially. These two slides, the 71 and 74 slide, weren't even addressed until 2004. So it takes a long time with Corps of Engineers to get everything done, but they have done that. They've provided almost two and a half miles of shoreline, which started down that path. These are Corps of Engineers documents, looking at the the smelter site as a potential historic places under the National Historic Preservation Act, and then looking at putting up the proposed bank work in 2003. That led to additional information, and in 2006, the Corps of Engineers and our agency, Idaho Department of Environmental Quality, worked on an initial preliminary assessment when we found elevated levels of lead, arsenic, and those were the two real drivers that were remnants of the old smelting process, and these were on the upper surface areas, not in the lakeshore itself. There is a slag pile, but that's more like vitrified slag, and I'll get into that in a minute. That led to a 2009 assessment grant, and that was a coalition grant. Idaho DEQ was the lead, but we had our partners, which was the city of Sandpoint, the city of Ponderay, the city of Kootenay, and the Bonner County. So we put a steering committee. In fact, Jeremy was, at the time, he was a planner. He was on the steering committee, along with Stephen Sneddon, who was a city council member from Sandpoint. And we had, Eric Brubaker was in city of Kootenay at that time, and then we had
Louis Rich.
Louis Rich.
County Commissioner.
Yeah. County Commissioner, good guy. Louis, most of my life, so. That led us to do a bunch of work, and we divided it. Actually, this was my idea, and these zones have haunted me for years. What we have here is the Ponderay Bay Trail area, and I came up with this idea of different zones. In the Sandpoint area, we had Zone 1, the Humbird Landing. We had beach shacks in that large 4,400 foot-long area because there were some old beach shacks. In fact, when, as a kid growing up, the Murphy family actually lived in there, and they had power because railroad tracks had had power lines that ran by the water, and so there was houses in there, and it was kind of interesting. There was a coal dock, the smelter, and then Kootenay access area. So this was a total of about 100 acres of property that was a dream of, at that time, the city of Sandpoint, the city of Kootenay, or, well, Kootenay to a point, and the city of Ponderay were working collaboratively with North Idaho Bike Ways and the Idaho Conservation League to come up with a plan for bike paths and a corridor, and that was all, you know, sort of as the seasons was being built at the start of the trail, there was a lot of concern that we'd see condominiums the whole way. So this group got together, and eventually in 2012, the city of Sandpoint purchased a couple, couple more parcels. The city of Sandpoint had been purchasing parcels from the Hall family for a number of years to expand the water treatment plant, and then the city of Ponderay, along with money from the Friends of Ponderay Bay Trail, and even from
the Lor Foundation, I think.
Lor Foundation and Trust for Public Lands have all put money into this for the acquisition, so it's a public corridor. These were some of the reports we did. This is just on the smelter site itself, and I'm not going to go over those. But if anybody wants to know, I could give you a public records request, and you could read several thousand pages of really detailed documents. But we have a real good handle what's going on there. And this is the area we sampled. We're looking at the same chunk of property. So the Friends of Ponderay Bay Trail put together a master plan, which to this day is still sort of what the, you know, ideas of what this trail could be. This is sort of the, this is the top shelf plan. It's got a lot of, a lot of high-dollar items, but it was all for making a really nice trail and park system. So that led to the city of Ponderay acquiring the last two parcels. And so there was, even though there looks like a number of parcels, altogether, the city of Ponderay purchased those, and Steve, if you'd like to talk about the purchase of those, when they occurred approximately, and
Yeah, so the city purchases just a couple of years ago, and again, thanks to those local option tax dollars, we heard very clearly from the community that they wanted to see that area preserved and not, you know, commercialized and whatnot. So along with working with the property owners, we created a plan and made it happen, and we're able to purchase those properties.
Thank you. So that gets us to another one of the handouts you have. What are we going to do as far as cleanup? The last year in September, we put out a public comment on a draft work plan, and it listed alternatives of what could be done, and this document went out for public review. We had four comments. Only one of them was from the Idaho Conservation League, and and we addressed all of their comments, and then citizens also had some specific comments, very good comments. And we were able to approve this and go down that path to finally cleaning up this. The alternative that was selected out of the four alternatives, and this is more of an engineering evaluation cost analysis that you do on any type of large-scale project, was alternative three, which is the removal of the contaminated soils and waste for disposal in an onsite repository, and then stabilization of the slag pile and encapsulation. So keep in mind that what we're dealing with are metals, and metals are in everything that's in this room, and besides the wood, there's actually probably metals in the wood. But metals don't volatilize. They don't turn into liquid, at least not at the temperatures that humans can withstand. So an onsite repository, we've done other onsite repositories. We've got them down by Lakeview. We've got them a lot of repositories throughout the state of Idaho. So it's, it's an engineered design containment system, and they have worked really well. So this kind of gives you an idea of the, we'll be removing most of the the upper area and putting that into a repository. So we also had to do an Army Corps of Engineers 404 Joint Permit Application that goes to the Army Corps. It goes to Idaho Department of Lands, Idaho Department of Water Resources, goes to our agency under the 401 Water Quality Certification. And we submitted all of that in January of this year. And this kind of gives a more of an engineering look, but where the repository will be up by the right-of-way, approximately, well, it's approximately almost 500 feet from the lake itself, and that's where that will be built. And this shows the slag pile down by the water being covered with concrete, which that's the idea, is to cover that with concrete. We'll keep a little viewing area where there's the old crisscross tracks that came on, and then there'll be stabilization to keep the lake out of contact with that slag pile. Now, that's probably the most protective thing we can do for the area, and I think that, you know, it was a good plan, and we've done this before in other sites. We do on Snake, or we actually, we have a slag pile that's still sitting in the snake, so they, they're, they don't tend to erode too quickly. Part of the reason we're here tonight is to look at this yellow line. So initially, when we put all of this together last year, and we were looking at potentially coming in at the original 2004 temporary rail crossing that they'd set up to do the stabilization on the far end of Ponderay. That was removed by Burlington Northern Santa Fe in the blowout that occurred out there in that gully, just on the other side of this, where the tracks, I think it was, what was that? Was it 20? Do you remember, Mayor?
Probably 2016-ish. It was right after I signed on.
Yeah, right after you came. There was, there was a flood in that gully that's on the other side, and it blew out the tracks, and so the railroad came in, and they removed that temporary crossing. So our current estimate to just build, rebuild the temporary crossing, if we could get approval by Burlington Northern Santa Fe, is approaching $300,000, which is a lot of money, considering this is a cleanup that we're looking at about $2 million. So we talked about potentially coming in along the Ponderay Bay Trail. Keep in mind, we're not going to be hauling any dirty dirt out. We're going to be hauling in some equipment, and then we'd have to come through Sandpoint's water treatment plant. There'd have to be a little work outside of the gate to get to the trail, and there would be maintenance that would be done on Ponderay Bay Trail as part of this agreement with Ponderay and with the city of Ponderay to replace some of the smaller culverts with larger culverts and reinforce that, but we're not bringing a lot of material in except for the riprap. And at this point in time, we're still negotiating. There's, we could barge in most of the large cobble that would be used for the riprap. And so the real purpose, one of the purposes of talking to you guys tonight about this is, for one, I haven't been to the city of Sandpoint to talk about this project for nearly 12 years, so it's a good time for me to say hi to you. And then to show you this and kind of get an idea, I know that in our conversation that Mayor Grimm and Mayor Geiger and I had prior to this meeting, I think we can work with the seasons, and Mayor Geiger has contacts with the seasons. We know that the, the former Best Western is going to be, we know that there's going to be work, and that's going to go away. So there's, this really comes down to when are we going to do this? And a funny thing happened on May 6, 2024. We've run into a slight glitch, and this is from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, and it's a large Gantt chart. It's kind of showing us timeline. But the bottom line is when you look at this final date, it's showing us a starting date of June of 2025, and this is to get National Historic Preservation Act Section 106 approval, and this is in response to some concerns that the Kalispel Tribe and both the Idaho State Historic Preservation Office. And so on previous projects, generally under EPA's Brownfields Program, which is a subset of CIRCLA, DEQ, we do all of the notification. We work with the agencies and the tribes. Because this is a lot larger cleanup than we normally do, because it's on Lake Ponderay, which is the Kalispel Tribe's birthplace, it is something we're going to have to, we've turned everything over to the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. They're going to be working with the tribes and working with EPA, and then we will have this approval. We're hoping we'll have it sooner than next June, but it does give us some time. We may not, we may see something. The earliest I would see is mid, mid-winter, January, February, to start some stabilization work. Though at this point, there's not going to be any, any movement, which when I first talked about with Steve about doing this presentation, we were ready to go this summer. And this happened to slow us up. This is slowing up a project I have with the city of Priest River, too, so same timelines for them, so. But we'll keep you guys informed. We'll keep you updated as soon as we get a better idea of this. This gives us a little bit more time to work with the barge, to work with Kramer, to try to secure that, because what we'd really like to do is rather than to bring in 200 to 250 dump trucks with clean rock to build the stabilization, if we could do it by barge and stockpile it and then do it there, we basically are only having equipment go in, the equipment that has to move this stuff comes in and then goes out, so there wouldn't be a lot of work movement on the trail. So maybe this is a blessing in disguise, you know, this delay. Maybe it gives us that time to really get our logistics done. So it is what it is. That's all I can say. And, and that's really all we have today. I do want to share this picture, and if you look at that picture, there's a moose. And this picture was taken in December of 2011, and it was done by Jerry Luther, who's the Hooey Duck Man, been around Sandpoint forever. So Jerry had a little, a little remote-controlled airplane in 2011, and he strapped on his camera, and he'd take drone pictures. I mean, it wasn't a real drone, but Jerry was out there, and he, he knew we were doing this work, and so we were on top of the slag pile, which is in the background there, and and it was about 20 degrees, and this moose and his calf just were hanging out, coming up, seeing us, so. I figure if moose like us, you know, hopefully it'll be a good project. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Steve. And Steve, really appreciate the update. So I had one question before I open up to council. You mentioned January, December, January. You're talking about '25, '26 likely that this work would potentially the stabilization work would initiate?
I, no, I mean, maybe we'll, we'll see an approval before then. If you look at, look at that Gantt chart, part of it has to do with a memorandum of agreement, which goes into a five-site mitigation, which is a large National Historic Preservation Act thing that can sometimes take a year, and that's why this June 25th, this potential to occur this January, February would be a really rosy picture. So otherwise, you're right, Jeremy. It would be the winter, the following winter of 2025, 2026. And knowing how the Army Corps of Engineers operates, I feel that's probably our most realistic.
And, you know, my only comments as you get there, just let us know timing. I imagine we're going to want a public awareness walkthrough plans on coordinating with the potential hotel that's going to be developing during that time period and related items. So I applaud you for, both of you, for the passion and putting this cleanup as a priority and successfully getting funding. Council members, any question for Steve and Steve?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead.
I understand that you mentioned ICL. Idaho Conservation League has corresponded with you. They requested that all of the contaminated materials be removed from the site and disposed of in a hazardous waste facility. It sounds as if the plan, as they understand now, is for most of the material to be stored in a protective way on site, but that the smaller one inch by one inch will be left on the beach and in the area of the lake near the shoreline. We're kind of wondering if this is an accurate understanding. I know you said that it's, or somebody had written in some of the documents I read that it wasn't feasible to remove all the small pieces. So we're wondering how people will be protected from the metals pollution and those small fine gravels and sands that are still going to be there. And then I'm wondering if you answered that with, are you putting concrete on what's left there? Is that what you're calling the slag pile? You're putting the concrete on?
On the top of the
On the top, okay.
On the top, yeah. We won't, we won't mess with the, the sides of the slag pile are pretty friable, and so you, it would be problematic to try to put concrete there. This is the idea of building the stabilization. So the stabilization that's coming out, so the area where we're stabilizing with the riprap, which is like the trail, from that area into the lakeshore, there's nothing that's going to be left in that area that's, that has any contamination. We have, we sampled all of that down to, well, we went down to eight feet, but in the top foot, which is really where that is, that will be removed, I mean, as part of the the project. And then the stabilization will be here. So where we're stabilizing it, going back, there's a small area between the slag pile and the stabilization. We're not going to pick that up because that won't be in, it won't be interacting with the lake. But then part of that stabilization is that area of little beach sand between the, the trail, continuing the Ponderay Bay Trail, and the slag pile. There's going to be large boulders put in there on top of all of that. So we don't have any groundwater seeps in that area at all. We haven't, we've been, we've been sampling for seeps going back to 2001. So we don't have any seeps that are causing groundwater issues. We don't have any of that. So in that reference, it's just that area that's on the, from the stabilized bank to the slag pile. But again, it's going to have large boulders to sort of detract people from wanting to crawl onto that beach. It isn't really a beach when it's done. Yeah, you'll, I have a picture of an example of it, but I don't like to use it because it's not, it's not what we're doing. I mean, it's not quite what we're doing there. But we've seen this before in other slag pile sites, and, I mean, there are sites in back east that are similar, use a similar plan, so.
Okay, so you're thinking that's going to protect the people just from swimming in that spot? But what about, I guess we concerned about the seepage into the lake from those small pieces?
Right.
Boulders aren't really going to hold it. I guess we're just wondering.
So, so we're, we're not really getting any lead or zinc or cadmium or selenium or any of the elements that are in that report in, in the water around the slag pile.
Okay, so it's not already there?
It's not there right now, and it's totally interacts with the lake. So that, we even did acid washing, and when we acid washed it, when we got down to a pH of 2, we could get a little bit of mobility. But a pH of 2 is pretty acidic. I mean, you're, you're almost approaching battery acid, and if the lake was at that, we wouldn't be here, so.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Trevor?
Yeah, I'm sure you've thought of this, but is there any danger because
Yeah, I'm sure you've thought of this, but is there any danger, because like you said, our water treatment plant is right there. Is there any danger that this process could till up existing heavy metals into the water that could end up in our water treatment plant?
No, because we'll go ahead and we'll remove the, the sort of, a lot of people see when you're at the slag pile and they look at that beach, it's kind of like a little black sand beach. You know, as a kid growing up, we didn't know what it was. But actually, my mom swam there in the late 30s. She lived in Kootenay. So it's funny. But, and, you know, she lived to be pretty darn old. So anyway, it, I, we'll, we'll use the best available science and engineering to, to make sure we don't mitigate that. There'll be enough, you know, we'll come out. The nice thing is, is when the lake's down, full pool, we have 275 feet out from the slag pile of clean material and the lake's out further. So we'll have, we'll be able to put in silt fencing and capture zones. So all of that's part of the engineering package that we put together.
True. Thank you.
Any other questions for council? Sounds like as we move forward, we'll be informed and ultimately we'll be talking about an access plan through Ridge Street and down to, through the water plant, down to the Bay Trail.
Yes, we will. And we are planning, before this, we'll have a couple of public meetings and one we're planning to do in Sandpoint. Maybe we'll use a council, maybe we'll use a separate location and then we'll also do one at Ponderay at the Oaks. And so we'll keep you guys updated and let you know. And if you ever have any questions, fire me an email.
Thanks, Steve, and thanks, Mayor Geiger. Appreciate your presentation and the update.
Thank you very much.
Next item is some announcements from the mayor and council. Mine will be brief. We do have a special event tonight. Just for the council's benefit and the public, starting next week, I am becoming a part-time mayor, which I'm really excited about. With the promotion and hiring of various department heads, I will now be in the office Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and a half day Thursday. So I'll be meeting with my individual department heads on Tuesdays, collectively with the team on Wednesday, and then available Wednesday afternoon and half of Thursday to attend to the public or other needs. So that's really exciting for me. Next, I did send you all a letter that I drafted for the Army Corps of Engineers to be copied to Bonneville Power. If you don't have any comments, a couple of you gave me comments. I will assume you're good with it and I will transmit that as soon as possible here. Finally, we're working on the budget and we have some individual meetings. I intend to meet with all of you with Sarah next, starting next week. So we'll go over the budget and prepare and respond to any questions you might have on that. And finally, I think you heard, it's big news, but the hotel was approved at a planning commission meeting. You might hear more about that in a second, but exciting new chapter for downtown Sandpoint. With that, any council announcements?
Oh, yeah. One of these, I left it at home, too. I was just going to announce that my favorite part of Sandpoint in the summer is local music. And if you look online, Make Music Sandpoint, I think it's a first annual and it's a nationwide music event where just musicians gather around. And I think somebody came once and, and mentioned it. And so from like, you can get the schedule from like 9:30 in the morning at Evans Brothers till late in the evening at Matchwood. Different people are playing. And if you're a musician, you can look on there and they want you to come join them. So I just, I think that's just wonderful Sandpoint news.
Thanks for bringing that to our attention, Pam. Any other council announcements? All right. With that, I now yield the Florida staff for some reports. I think we'll have Corey go first, Brandon, and this is a truly astonishing announcement and event that's about to take place.
I usually stall till the end, but this time I'm selfishly going first. So thanks, Brandon, for waiting a moment. It is exciting. Today's a big day for, for some of us. Not really for me, but for others that are here with us. So if I could have Jackie come up here for a minute, she's going to stand by me while I read all this. I promised her I wouldn't make her speak, except for to say thank you, but she's going to come smile, smile with me. And I'm just going to read this. Says Jackie, I want to take this opportunity to express our deepest gratitude and heartfelt thank you for your exceptional service and unwavering dedication to the police department and our community. Your remarkable 46 years of service, I said that right, 46 years of service to this community has made an immeasurable impact. And it is with great pleasure that we present with you this meritorious award for your outstanding commitment to this department and to the community. Your inspiring leadership and unwavering dedication to making a positive difference has not gone unnoticed. And we are truly privileged to have you as a valued member of our team. You care and support for the officers and the chief of police has been invaluable. Captain Bailey told me a couple of stories, but we won't get them all. But this one I put down. He said, over the past 29 years, I have been with the police department. There have been countless times during emergencies where Jackie has gone above and beyond her duties with our department, making sure the officers were taken care of in the field and the critical paperwork related to those cases were given to the proper agencies. I'm grateful for Jackie's hard work and sincerely appreciate her contributions to this department over these years. As you embark on your new chapter in life, please know that we are genuinely excited for you. And once again, congratulations. And a heartfelt thank you for your years of dedication and service to this department and community. Won't make you say anything.
No.
So that's the written one. We talked a little bit about what Jackie does. There is, we hire new cops all the time. Let me tell you, it's easy. We have a great program for hiring new officers, training them, getting them in the field. We haven't hired an office staff member since, I think it was 99. So when the mayor asked me this week, how easy is it going to be to replace Jackie? And I struggle because there's a few positions in our department that we just don't worry about. And Jackie's one of them. We don't worry about it. I just know it's going to get done. It's nothing that we ever have to stress over in a position that I'm in. That's invaluable to know that those little things can get done. She's raised more officers than I think I've ever seen come through the department. In her times with the police department, I raise that because she is the first line of defense when it comes to fixing, correcting, changing, editing, and making us look good. I mean, she does an outstanding, outstanding job with it. I could go on, but I won't because I know that she doesn't like being here to start with. But what we do have is we do have a little certificate for you. But more important, we don't hand out very many awards in life, at least I don't. But I find it very, very important for this for you. So we talked about in the letter, the meritorious award. Forty-six years, what do you give somebody that's, that's dedicated 46 years of service to an agency or to a department or to a community? It's the least we can do is give you this. So I'm going to give you this. And you can wear it for the moment because we're going to do photos. Mayor, you want to come down for a photo?
First I, well, I
We'll go ahead and say, if you guys, if you guys want to say something, please, please do. Then we'll do photos and invite our family up and stand and clap. But go ahead.
I'm astonished, Jackie. I was, uh, said, uh, I was a, a young pup. I was out of diapers, but that's, that's incredible. Forty-six years. Thank you so much for all that you've done through all the mayors and all the councils and all the challenges and successes that we've had. I know there've been some hard times, some really hard times and some good times. And through it all, you, you kept the police department going. So thank you so much. Hope you have a great retirement.
I just wondered if you were old enough to work when you started. Thank you. That's awesome.
Come on down and we'll take some photo. You and your family come down too. Come on down. I would have to say that, so Jackie's one daughter might have been five when I started. I was probably five when Jackie started. So I think it's a fair, a fair trade. Squeeze in here. This is, this is exciting. Steven's going to take a couple of photos and perfect. So if everybody wants to stand up and clap?
Six years.
You don't hear that very often anymore.
I'm not going to cover any reports or anything else. That's all I want. So unless you guys got questions on anything on behalf of the police department, I'm going to sit down. Perfect.
Council, any questions for the police chief?
Thanks so much, chief. Keep up the great work, guys and gals. Other department updates. Daryl Hughes, Central Services Director. And for the council, remind you again, that's Clerk's Office, IT, HR, contracts and procurement.
Good evening. I just have a few updates for you from the department. We will start with IT. The BSA cloud migration and implementation is complete. And it was a heavy lift for IT staff and finance. And they got all the issues that came up resolved. It was, it was a lot of work, but there was a lot of support given to staff throughout the entire organization. So we're very thankful for finance and IT for that. In contracts, the Leadlock contract is under final review with Leadlock. So it'll be coming to council probably second meeting in Ju- July. And the development impact fee study is completed as far as the RFP process. So that contract is being drafted and it should be on the July 3rd council meeting for your view and approval. On the HR front, the Public Works Director position, the Recruiter GMP Consultants has released it. So it's, it is officially been released and hopefully we start getting some response soon and some bites on that. In city clerk, the transition from executive assistant to deputy city clerk is going well. And the transition and training is, is coming along and the division is getting much needed support. So that is great news. And I'm just going to give an update on streets for the Legends markings, like in the bike lanes. The rain and the weather has delayed the progress on that this season, but it is in progress. So the, it will get completed as long as weather continues to cooperate. As far as the crack sealer and the dura-patcher, both of those pieces of equipment should be arriving in a couple, one to two weeks. And the East Side Highway District has provided a crack seal machine for practice and, and training. And the first project they're going to be doing with that is Schweitzer Cut Off west of the Roundabout, where the chip seal project will take place. And so that will help when the chip seal is done after the crack sealing, it'll help fill up all of that. So that's where they're going to do the first project for that. And then they're going to do more within the city, but those areas have not yet been identified. So I don't have an update on where that will take place. The dura-patcher training is going to take place on July 9th with the vendor. And the first project for the dura-patcher is going to be on Main Street from Fifth to Fourth. And there's maybe on Pine Street, but that's really going to be dependent on the, the construction bids that are due on July 2nd. And if we're going to be able to incorporate anything on Pine Street, but it's, it's bid dependent. So if not, the dura-patcher Pine Street will be probably the, the second area that'll be used. And that's for Central Services. Any questions from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Sure. Go ahead, Council President Rule.
I just wanted to put your radar out on the fact there are some large cracks opening up in our bike path between where city limits are and, I don't know, City Hall here going towards Dover. So that might benefit from some practice with the sealing machine because those are a bit more hazardous for bikers. As opposed, so anyway, I didn't know if you were aware of that because it's maybe not in our streets survey. So, but it is something that could be addressed.
Yeah. And I can talk with Chet and Brandon on that.
Yeah, they probably know where every crack is, but if they could get trained, maybe.
Yeah, I'll definitely mention it.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. And council, I visited with Chet this morning and I told him when that thing arrives, I even asked him to consider switching to their plowing schedule with a nighttime cruise. I want those two machines to be running nonstop and be worn out by the, the time the cold weather comes. Cause these are two, two tools that we'll have to make a slight improvement in our road surfaces in the community. So, and preserve, preserve them as well. Cheryl, you didn't mention the wastewater treatment plant is Polygona or someone else is going to touch on that?
I will, uh, well, I can.
Sure.
The wastewater treatment plant, the, the pre-engineering report, the RP, the RFQ, I'm sorry, was completed. We are holding interviews with the top two highest scoring statement of qualifications that we received. We're holding interviews on Tuesday with them. So it is coming along and we should have a contract for council if all goes well for consideration on the July 3rd meeting. So, but we had, we had good firms submit SOQs for that. So.
And council, we, we brought in Cody Van Dyke, our former Public Works Director to participate in that ranking. And this is going to move fast, just so you and the public are aware. There's a very aggressive timeline to get preliminary engineering and technology determined so we can get this LOI, Letter of Interest into the Idaho DEQ by the first week of January. So this is going to move pretty fast. If you have questions, you'll get regular reports and updates and depending on how much information you want on it, let me know and we'll get it to you. Thank you, Cheryl. And then just the last thing for council's benefit, the BSA cloud migration, that's the lifeblood of the city. If you're not aware, every staff member uses that, the public uses it, but it's what we use for everything, records, billing, permitting, so much invoicing. It is, it is the system the city runs on. So it's, it's a wonderful addition to have that upgraded.
Yes. And maybe I do have one question.
Oh, sure.
Go ahead, councilwoman.
The green, who did the green on Division?
That was part of the Division Street project.
Okay. I, people love it. I'm just sharing.
That was part of the project. We contracted separate with our traffic lane striping contract. But ultimately, the decision to do the green blocks was all part of the project and that is Brandon.
That's what I thought. That's what I thought.
You'll, you'll also notice Ms. Rebecca Holland visited with me and asked if we couldn't do that north of the Columbia Bank. Is that Cedar or Oak? I always get them confused. Not Cedar, Oak or Church. But you'll see it on the north side of the Columbia Bank to better delineate the bike area for kids going downtown.
Is that going to stay then? We're going to keep that?
As long as we have money for paint.
Okay. Yeah, that's what people have asked me. Right.
You know, an addition to the bike lane.
It's great.
But safety wise, yeah. So
We feel seen.
It could be something that the engineering is, you know, considering going forward. But I'm sorry, that would be a question.
Thanks. Okay, I wondered.
Just for clarification, that's Oak and Fourth. And I rode my bike to the bank today at lunchtime and there were cones around it. So I couldn't use it yet, but it looks very nice.
You'll see some other painting.
Good job, Brandon.
You'll see some, that's Rebecca Holland.
Well, but Brandon's in charge of the green.
Rebecca said, Jeremy, can't we do something to paint
Those ones.
the streets. So I said, Brandon, Brandon, paint the streets. That's how it works.
Everybody gets credit. I'm good with that.
Uh, we're also doing a lot of other painting. You'll see, is it Superior and Boyer just south of Winter Ridge? I got a citizen complaint about how difficult the site is at that intersection. So I visited with Chet and Brandon and they got that painted up red. So it's very bright, very obvious. No parking, 30 feet back. And I've told them to proceed with painting trouble intersections, the no parking as you approach those around down. So should be see some improvements there. Thank you. Director Welker, Community Planning and Development.
Good evening, council. Some updates from our VAS department over the last two weeks.
Good evening, council. Some updates from our vast department over the last two weeks. The big one, of course, is the Tuesday night Planning and Zoning Commission public hearing on the conditional use permit for 56 Bridge Street, the 181-room hotel coming to City Beach. If you didn't have the endurance to sit through the four hour and 41 minute meeting, just a few highlights, there were there was a packed house for sure. We had to bring on several extra rows of chairs. We had 25 members of the public speak during the public hearing on that. 22 in favor, two neutral, and one opposed. Given the overwhelming support from affected parties, a lot of the neighbors immediately adjacent to that property came and spoken support. Despite what was published in the, in the reader today, that CUP hearing is considered a final hearing on this. There, there won't be a city council hearing as there might have been had there been some more opposition to it. So the city has, of course, our team, our planning team has been working very closely with the Avril family for months on that project. The, the anticipated start date, as you may have heard, is sometime next fall. They plan to finally close and apply for a demolition permit for the existing hotel. Construction would probably take around two years. In the process, we're going to see some substantial increases in revenues for the city's Development Impact Fee Fund. And in the future, the lodging tax revenue is expected to be around $2 million a year based on average occupancy rates of that hotel. And as you know, the lodging tax goes almost entirely towards our streets budget. So we're really excited to see some increases in revenues and opportunities for improvements to our, our city streets coming out of this project. Just so happens that the Phase Three of Downtown Revitalization is, is likely to coordinate well with the implementation of the construction of the new hotel. So we are probably in the next year or two going to be looking at going into design and construction for the Superior Street to Bridge Street phase of Downtown Revitalization. So there's going to be a lot of changes coming to downtown as a in conjunction with the new 56 Bridge Street Hotel. Let's see, Arts, Culture, Historic Preservation, we have one exciting project that's about to get off the ground. That is the Big Belly Art Wraps. You've seen the utility art wraps around town that we implemented three or four years ago, sponsored by STCU. I think a couple dozen utility boxes are wrapped with local artists' work. The city happens to own two Big Belly Waste Recyclables, which we are proceeding with a call for arts submissions from elementary school students later this summer and into this, beginning of the school year. And we're going to see some vinyl wraps around our two city-owned bins, which are on the corner of First and Main and on the corner of First and Cedar. This is another STCU-sponsored project. There will be an honorarium for the elementary school artists whose work is selected. So our ACHP officer, Heather, has been spearheading that project, and it actually relates to one of the agenda items I'll be presenting later tonight as well. Okay. Committee Commissions, we have another set of appointments for you on consent tonight. That is for our Sustainability Committee, and I'd like to thank the six nominees that the mayor selected. That is Christine Moon, Deborah Dickerson, Diana Duke, Katerina Pele, Wayne Benner, who I saw here tonight, and Mary Wilco. So thanks to the volunteers who stepped up to work on the Sustainability Committee. I was hoping to bring you ADA appointments tonight, but we still only have four city residents, or sorry, only three city residents and three non-residents who have applied for that committee. We need a minimum of four city residents, and we can have one non-city resident on that committee. So we still need a few more applications for ADA. And the same is true for the Urban Forestry Commission. I'm hoping by our meeting in July, we can bring you appointments for those two committees. So what's going on with Committees, Commissions? I emailed all of the appointees for the three that we've now appointed today. I think I CC'd you guys. And several of you have reached out to tell us which committee or commission you'd like to volunteer on. If you haven't done so yet, please email the, the mayor and let him know. We are planning to convene those committees and commissions towards the end of summer. Internally, we still have to adopt Commissioner Committee Member Handbooks and a Staff Handbook for how our staff liaisons are expected to work with those committees to advance projects and support their work at the city. Okay, I got a couple more updates for you. The first one, astute observers of the playground area at Traverse Park may have noticed that the 30-year-old Rotary Pavilion has been removed from the site. And you would also notice that the design plans for the new playground include incorporating the Rotary Pavilion in the site. Well, when the Rotary Club of Sandpoint saw those design plans, they reached out to the city and said, we would prefer you not reinstall our 30-year-old pavilion. What we would like to do is partner with the city to fundraise for a brand-new pavilion at Traverse Park. So next month, the mayor and I are joining the Rotary Board Meeting, and we plan to present, well, they've already presented to us this proposal. So we want to go hear what they would like to do for Traverse Park. If you're not aware, Rotary Club built the concert shell at Farmen Park, which is an extremely valuable amenity for farmers market attendees. That's where, where the live music is every weekend. And there are just summer concert series held there. So we're really excited to have Rotary Club supporting another similar type structure that would basically form the gateway to the new Traverse Park Playground. It does mean that when we complete the park this fall, and when, when it's open to the public, it will not have a pavilion as it did in the original drawings. But within a year or two, the Rotary Club is excited to bring us something really cool that's more updated than the 30-year-old timber frame structure that was there before. So we're, mayor and I are excited to work with the Rotary Club on a vision for that location. So I just wanted to let you know that if you're wondering what happened to that structure, it was removed at the request of the Rotary Club. And we are looking forward to bringing you guys some concepts in the future for what could go there. Skatepark update, we owe another round of thanks to the Bonner County Skatepark Association, which dropped off a $10,000 check last week. They've continued to do fundraising, and they're continuing to support a project there. They've had a lot of say in what's going on there. They chose the builder, in fact. That check was from the Bank Slalom event they held in March up at Schweitzer. And I, just a little clarification, I know there were some questions about the two consent items about the skatepark tonight. One is the $50,000 Gem Grant, which we're receiving tonight. The other is about a change order with $12,000 of additional excavation work for the skatepark. The budget for the skatepark, I know there were some questions about this. The, the original contract for the skatepark was $400,000, but you might, might have seen in my staff report about the Gem Grant that we have $464,000 in the budget. So why do I need to come to you for a change order if we're within our budget? It's because the, the change order is triggered whenever there's an, an excess of the original contract amount, not the budget. So we're still well within budget for the skatepark, but the contractors for $400,000. So this is a change order to raise that to 412. Does that make sense? We're also, next week, opening bids for the lighting at the skatepark, which is what that extra $60,000 plus thousand dollars. And the Skatepark Association has submitted a grant application with the Avista Foundation, which will hopefully get us even higher in that 464 number so that we can have a really awesome LED lighting plan there. So we are going to be opening bids for the skatepark lighting next week, and at the next meeting, I'll probably have an update for you on that. Let's see. Thanks to Councilwoman Duquette and Schreiber for joining myself and a few staff members in the watershed last week. You got a tour of the logging operation up on the south side of the creek. We got to see in, in action how our city's 4,000 acres of, of city-owned property in the watershed is being used to generate revenue for the city. How it's being used to manage that natural resource and, and, and achieve the visions of our watershed management plan adopted in 2019. Just, I got an email just this afternoon from Inland Forest Management. We have hauled out 100 loads of, of high-value timber from the watershed between last fall and this summer. That comes out to almost $3,000, $300,000 of revenue for the city. And we are about three-quarters of the way through that logging operation. So we're expecting to generate around, net around $400,000. That'll be in our city's water fund at the conclusion of that logging operation. Along with that, there are all sorts of infrastructure improvements being done in the watershed. They, they've already laid several new culverts, ripped out old culverts that were undersized and, and crumbling. Gravel is being hauled in today to lay over some of those new culverts. And they're also requesting some additional improvements to existing roads in the watershed. So that this, this project is really about maintaining our infrastructure so that we can continue to manage that forest sustainably in a way that protects water quality. Since I spoke to you two weeks ago, a new trail segment opened up in the Lower Basin from Pondray Peddlers Project. The contractors are taking a few weeks on a project out in Big Sky, Montana, but they'll be back to complete the next phase of the Lower Basin trail project for this summer, which is a new trail from Switchback Six on Schreizer Mountain Road down to Switchback Four. So we expect them to be back in about three weeks to continue the, the project going on there. There are actually other projects going on the watershed on private property up above the Roundabout. The city's been working closely with Schreizer Mountain Properties to make sure that their, their projects, they're about to break ground on a housing development up there, but it's in our watershed. It's actually going to be the first housing development in the little Sand Creek watershed, just barely, just right up on the south ridge of Schweitzer. But there, they've been great partners, partners working with the city to make sure that recreational access is retained and that they're doing all the same best management practices to protect water quality that we implement in our logging projects and our trail projects on city property. So that's it for my updates. I'll be back later tonight to talk about a code amendment. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you. Jason, any questions for Jason? Okay. Keep up the great work. Anyone else back there want to make a staff report? No burden or necessity? Okay. I guess the next element is our public forum. Next is our public forum, which allows the public to address the council and myself on items listed on the consent calendar on any relevant city Sandpoint topic, not included on the agenda. If anyone wishes to speak now or during any other portion of the meeting when a public comment is allowed, you must complete a comment signup form located on the table by the door and hand it to the chief or anyone at the back table to accommodate those who wish to speak during the general public forum, as well as those who wish to speak on specific business items on our agenda. A total of 20 minutes will be dedicated to the public forum at the beginning of this meeting. If you'd like to speak and did not have an opportunity to do so in that timeframe, we will reopen the public forum at the end of the meeting. I'd like to make everyone aware that the city does have a public policy and meeting decorum policy. The rules are posted here in chambers at the entrance of the door, entrance of the chambers, excuse me. In summary, I'd ask that everyone please be pleasant and respectful, not make derogatory statements about others, including city staff, not be boisterous or disruptive, no calling out, clapping, holding up signs, et cetera. Please note that the council cannot take testimony on any planning-related matter outside of official public hearings. Public comment is a time for comment only, no questions or debate. You are always welcome to contact me during regular business hours if you have any questions or concerns. When you step up, step up to the podium, please state your name and whether you reside in city limits. Each speaker will have up to three minutes. And with that, Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak during our public forum?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Amelia Boyd.
Good evening, Ms. Boyd.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, councilors. I just rather wanted to reiterate my point that I said at the last meeting about not allowing Zoom members to speak. I'm actually rather disappointed it's not even on the agenda, seeing that it's a very light agenda, considering past agendas have been heavy, especially since two councilors voiced their displeasure with the decision. So I'm just reiterating again, please encourage this to come up for an action item on a future agenda. I think it's a shame not allowing people on Zoom to speak. When this was announced two weeks ago, I had no intentions of speaking in public forum, forum, but I was here. But if I were at home, I wouldn't have been able to voice my opinion during the public forum after the mayor's announcement. So it's those instances that I think is a hindrance for people that are at home that are not able to come here, but can watch it on Zoom. And another point for my experience two weeks ago, again, I had only intended to speak at one time. I spoke three times, and that never happens, as you know. And again, it's because of something that came up that was spoken at the meeting at that time. And if I were at home, I would not have been able to have that opportunity. And I think you lose a lot if I were to write a letter after the fact, and, you know, my voice isn't really as strong after the fact without the public hearing about it. So again, especially, it only takes two of you guys to put this on the agenda in the future. And if you have voiced your displeasure, I would expect it to see it on the agenda for an action item for council to decide. So I encourage you guys to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Boyd. And just for clarification, the policy is not to prohibit comments on Zoom. It is clearly stated that it is required to have pre-arranged approval to speak on Zoom. Also, for the public's benefit, the item has been requested to be placed on the next council meeting. And also point out, well, we'll discuss it at that point. It's a long meeting already. So anyone else, Madam Clerk?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right. And that will conduct the public forum portion of this evening's meeting. We will now proceed with the consent calendar. For the record, the total amount of bills is $1,087,731.53 for regable payables. Council, are there any questions or items you wish to remove from the consent calendar?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Howard.
I'd like to remove items five, six, and seven for further discussion.
Right. Items five, six, and seven will be placed on the end of the agenda. I believe that's the typical process. Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, typically, or you're, you can also choose to hear those items directly, directly after approval of the consent calendar.
Do you have a preference, Councilman Howard? We do have some.
I don't have a preference.
And Mr. Mayor, just for clarification, just in order to reiterate those, in addition to the numbered items, that's the change order number one to SCADA Upgrades Agreement, the Fifth Amendment to Professional Services Agreement with Logan Simpson Design, and the First Amendment to the Agreement with Jacobs Engineering for Planning Services.
Yes, excellent. I just, let's move those to the end of the agenda in light of the public that's here for the hearings or the hearing. Any other council members wish to remove any items or discuss any items on the consent calendar? Hearing none, I want to retain a motion to approve the consent calendar as amended.
Or moved.
Moved by Dick.
Second.
Second by Duquette. This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Spurrel?
Yes.
Counselor Duquette?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, motion passes.
Thank you. Next is a public hearing and decision on the final plat for West Point Place, a four-lot subdivision in the vicinity of Ontario Street and Highway Two. I will now recite the order and procedure for the public hearing. First, staff explanation of the subject in the public hearing. Second, a presentation by the applicant or the representative. Any questions should be directed to the applicant at that time. Next, we'll open the public hearing, at which time any public member may provide testimony. Those who wish to testify are required to complete a signup sheet. Council wishes to ask questions of the person testifying. Those questions need to be posed before the person returns their seat. The order for those who wish to speak will be as follows, those in favor, those neutral, and then those opposed. Rebuttal testimony will follow from the applicant or the representative. Final questions may be asked of the applicant at that time. However, and keeps this in mind, if new facts are elicited, the public will be given the opportunity to comment on any new, new facts. Public hearing will then be closed for council deliberation. No new information may be provided after the hearing is closed, and questions may be directed only to city staff during deliberation. For the record, any written comments received or included in the meeting packets or otherwise provided to council, if received in time to do so. Before we proceed, I would ask confirmation from each council member that you have no conflict of interest or ex parte contact regarding this matter. Council President Rule?
Mr. Mayor, no, I do not, but I do have a comment. Today's regular city council meeting is June 20th, not the 21st. Oops.
That's correct, Councilwoman Rule.
I don't know that it matters at all, but it might confuse somebody in the future if they're looking back at meeting minutes.
Yep. Councilman Schreiber, in conflict or ex parte?
No, I do not.
Councilwoman Duquette?
Oh.
Councilman Dick? Councilman Howard?
No.
And Councilman Espiro?
No.
Excellent. I will now yield the Florida interim city planner, Darren Flute, to get us started.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Apologies for the typo.
We all do it.
You know, I heard all day that it was the summer solstice, and I always knew the summer solstice to be the 21st, and so that must have been what happened. Apologies. Mr. Mayor, council members, this will be a very quick presentation on my part. I'll just start by saying, I think you'll all probably note that final plats are typically handled on the consent agenda because final plats are a binary question for staff and council, which is, does the final plat comply with the layout approved by the council as well as the conditions of approval? So we'll talk more about that in just a second. You'll recall that the West Point Place final, or plat subdivision, I guess, is located here on the Eastside Division, just south of Highway Two and north of Ontario, Ontario, providing its primary access, along with a small frontage on Highway Two, which also provides it. Just by way of setting the record straight, you'll recall that PS 230003 was approved by the council on December 12, 23. It included four lots on 4.3 acres, and it was subject to seven conditions of approval. During that hearing, it was During that hearing, it was noted that one of the lots, the northernmost lot that you see north of the red ellipse here, did not contain the required amount of frontage on Highway Two. Despite that fact, the preliminary plat was approved. And the remedy that was identified for that was simply to remove the lot line here, thereby reducing the lot count by one from four lots to three. That's the reason we're hearing this hearing tonight, just in case there's somebody from the public that feels aggrieved or wants to discuss why the final plat isn't exactly in the same configuration that the preliminary plat was in. Again, just by way of background, typically applicants are allowed to reduce the number of lots in a preliminary when they come to final, from what was approved in preliminary. What you may never do is increase the number of lots. And so we expect some minor deviations in, you know, during design and layout of a project, but that's why we're hearing this tonight at public hearing. So with regard to the final plat in front of you, it contains three lots as just described. We verified that all the conditions have been complied with and that the final plat includes all the required signatures of our sister agencies. And this is what the final plat looks like. Apologies for if that's a little bit blurry. And you'll see that the lot line simply has been removed here, creating a single lot where before we had two. So now all lots have frontage on the public right away as required. That's it. If council had questions, I'd be happy to take those now.
Council, any questions for Mr. Fluke?
Mr. Mayor, I have questions.
Duquette, fire away.
I'm not sure. My concern is the frogs. And I'm not sure if it's included. I read through that and didn't see last on the December twentieth meeting in an applicant rebuttal, Claire Marley represented the group. And she said that that habitat will be restored and improved. It's not in the minutes, but I listened to the meeting again and it is in the recording. And that she had contacted a professor in the University of Montana for help with that. And I don't know if I'm supposed to see that as part of the, I know mention was made of the path that was asked, the walking path. But I didn't see any mention about frogs. So is that a question?
Well, that's a question. What's gonna, what's the plan for the frog?
Exactly. Does it need to be in here because it was talked about in?
It wasn't a condition of the preliminary.
It was not.
That I saw. It was a statement from the applicant. And that would be, I think, an appropriate question for Mr. Fluke if he's heard any updates. And then when the applicant gets up, you could ask for details on that, but I would and besides, I did not see it as a condition of approval of the final plat. Please correct me if I am wrong on that one, Darren.
Did not see it either, but.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council member. The council did not choose to include that as a condition of approval on the final plat. So I was not able to evaluate anything related to that consideration. I know we do have the applicant here tonight, so certainly they can give you an update on that consideration and perhaps Brandon knows something I don't know as well. But I just know it was not a condition.
Yeah, it was not a condition to do any restoration ever, but I just want to clarify that there had been presentations previously that they were, as part of the stormwater plan for this development, they were going to scrape the entire habitat that we're calling the frog habitat, but that whole kind of vegetated stormwater swell in between them and the church. And that has since been abandoned through staff review. And the plan now, they have an approved stormwater plan, which was a condition of the preliminary plat. And that shows essentially only disturbing the, a small portion of the very south end adjacent to Ontario to install a better control structure, which is basically a concrete manhole with some pipes in it. But the rest of, they had demonstrated through their calculations that the rest of that, what we're calling the frog habitat, it was designated and sized as a treatment swell to handle a lot of offsite stormwater. And they demonstrated through their stormwater calculations that there is enough capacity to handle the future stormwater when this site gets developed. And we will have a chance to revisit that at the time of building permit. But I just wanted to clarify that the plan is no longer to just rip out all those those plants that were there like it was originally proposed.
Okay, because I did notice something is different there. And I didn't get back there today to look, but the frogs are not there and cat tails have been chopped down. It's different. It doesn't look the same as it did. And I don't know if that's weather related because I wasn't thinking about it until I saw this come up. And so I was a resident at that time. I was not on the council. I guess I did not realize that the discussion did not mean it wasn't a condition of approval for that or.
So, yeah, and Councilwoman Duquette, I visited briefly with Councilwoman Schreiber today, happy to further, you know, if you have questions about the plating process, preliminary and final, happy to work with you or any council members about how to really make sure that your conditions address your concerns on subdivisions as you're coming through.
Does that cover the path as well?
That was, my recollection is that was a a statement of the applicant to explore or condition or request from the council to explore path options. Again, exploring it, I believe they did. But it wasn't a condition that a pathway be dedicated.
Mr. Mayor?
Council President Rule.
My comment would be that I believe when we discussed this, that staff directed us that those concerns about the water habitat would be managed with engineering and further building permits, et cetera. It sounds like that's part of what's happening. I know there was definitely a concern of mine that was voiced as to where all that water exits and because it does not go into storm piping, it simply flows across the road for the most part. And then it ends up in a swale that courses the rest of olive until it hits birch where all the houses are. So if that amount is miscalculated, then there is going to be a lot of flooding in those backyards for neighbors on both sides that back up to that line of open drainage. So I guess that's my comment. My recollection was that we were assured that that would be done properly. And I'm glad to hear that we're going to try and leave some of the natural habitat. I understand that mowing things down sometimes to put in larger culverts and then allowing them to grow back is just part of the construction process, but do you remember those conversations, Brandon?
Yeah, I think so. And the applicant's representatives, I don't know if who did the stormwater plan, Darius can maybe provide a little bit more explanation of this, but the, the volume of the swale that exists right now was sized a long time ago in preparation for development of this entire area, including the piece of property that we're talking about right now. And so it's not really a matter of like, oh, right now the water just falls on this property and soaks into the ground. Right? It's already kind of a gravel parking lot. And they have, again, they have demonstrated calculations that shows that it does not negatively impact the downstream. You know, ability of the stormwater system downstream to handle the additional volume of runoff. So in other words, they're not making it worse downstream. That's what the whole point of the stormwater plan is, is to demonstrate that. Does that make sense?
It makes sense. And I'm hoping that calculations were done properly because I know it is kind of gravel, but gravel is still far more absorptive than roofs of buildings and asphalt. And that's going to run off a lot faster, so we'll have to wait and see, but I'm going to trust that professionals know what they're doing.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of why we require an engineer with a stamp to prepare plans. That's the reason they stamp them is because they're, they're saying, you know, I prepared this plan and I think it's going to work.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff regarding this hearing and this application?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilman Schreiber.
Yeah, I have a question about the traffic impact study. Did that look at Ontario as well as Division and Highway Two or just Division and Highway Two?
So the intersections that they analyzed for level of service were Division and Highway Two, Boyer and Highway Two. So they looked at that stoplight that was quite a ways away also at Boyer. They also analyzed the level of service at the driveway exiting the Mountain West Bank parking lot onto Division. And they also analyzed the driveway exiting onto the private driveway exiting onto Highway Two adjacent to Babs. The driveway onto Ontario was determined by the traffic impact study that there was not enough traffic to warrant doing a level of service analysis on that. Just because of the background counts and the anticipated counts. So they have three different ways to exit the site. One onto Ontario, one onto Division, and one directly onto the highway.
Sure. When that traffic impact study was completed, were the lots in the current configuration?
It was completed. Let's see. No, I don't believe it was. But the, the, the traffic study is not really based on the lots for a project like this. It's based on the proposed buildings, right? So what buildings are you proposing to put on here? Because what we're doing right now is just moving property lines around. So theoretically, anybody could buy one of these lots and build a much different project. So, so I, I don't think it's really relevant to the traffic impact study, how many lots there were personally.
But just because one of the lots that has frontage to Ontario is now roughly twice the size, is that accurate? Lot one is now much bigger.
Right.
And it has frontage.
Right. Yeah, consolidation of lots one and two for the final plat.
Would that make any have any effect on the traffic impact study?
I don't think so because again, it's based on, you know, in this case, their development plan shows a bunch of duplexes, fourplexes, like whether the lot line is split and you can carve half of those duplexes off onto one lot is kind of irrelevant to the amount of traffic that it's going to generate. That makes sense.
Sure. And then I do see one access easement running from Division all the way across the property. In the building illustration, it appears that one of the duplexes is within that easement. Has that easement been abandoned or is it still going to be relied on for access from Lot One to Division?
I think that the, they, they still use that easement to get from Lot Three out to Division. I, I, I don't, I'm not sure I understand. I, the, all the development plans that I've seen still show this development, the parking lot that's shared by all, both of these lots now, that they, that they have access from their parking lot through that easement. It just doesn't go all the way across. So I you would, if you zoom out a little bit, Darren, there, there is a building kind of where that, you can see the twenty foot dimension just south of the, on Lot Three there. Well, about the midpoint of Lot Three, there is a building there, but there's a parking lot on the west side of it. And the north side of Lot Three that connects to the parking lot that's on the west side of lots one and two. So in other words, you drive around that building in a parking lot and then exit through the easement. Does that make sense? It's hard for me to explain it though.
I can. Oh, yeah. Yeah, Mr. Mayor, council member. Thanks, Brandon. The easement, as dimensioned on this plat, still exists. If they were vacating that easement, it would be shown on the plat as such. And so no buildings will be allowed in that easement and it will remain open for access to Division. They have had a building permit approved for the project that Brandon referenced. And it does maintain that easement and no building will be allowed on top of the easement.
Excellent. Thank you.
And with regard to your previous question, just another way of kind of saying what Brandon was saying is we reduced by one lot, however, all three public road access approaches remain exactly as they were. And the land use has not changed. In other words, there's no more traffic being generated because of the reduction in lots.
Excellent. Thank you. On that same topic, then, is there or should there be an access easement for Lot Three connecting to Highway Two?
Well, that is a great question, council member, and one we can ask the applicant. I would say that Lot Three never had access shown to Highway Two. It always had its access on Ontario exclusively. The way the site plan works, from what I recall, when I saw this when I was working here before, was that this is essentially developed as a single multifamily project. And so all dwelling units will have access to each one of these three public roads.
But theoretically, these lots could be sold independently and have different owners that might not allow access?
Theoretically, yes.
And so that traffic impact study that relied on Lot Three having access to Highway Two, is that still valid?
Mr. Mayor, council member, I would have to look at the traffic study. I don't know that off the top of my head. I think, again, Lot Three was always shown as having its single access onto Ontario down here. And so, you know, I, I have to assume that the trip generation calculations that were done by the engineer were based on where the access was shown on this plat.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from council or staff? Excellent. I would now call to the podium the applicant or the representative for any presentation or remarks they'd like to provide. For the record, please state your name and who you're representing as it pertains to the application.
Good evening. I'm Darius Rule and I'm with Ruin Jägern Associates. This is Tessa Vogel. She's also with Ruin Jägern Associates. I'll take these in order. So the, the original plan was to remove an awful lot of the wet, the vegetation in the wetlands. And with working with the staff and with Claire Marley, the frog lady, we've, we've reduced that back to the nick and the leak. The only area that will be addressed will be at the outlet on the southern end and that would be a ten by ten, fifteen by fifteen foot area that would allow us to install a manhole type structure that actually provides additional treatment before it goes into the existing storm sewer system that's there. I do want to clarify or, or that what we have there is a retention basin and it's basically acts like a bathtub when it rains. The water from, from the surrounding properties and actually across the highway drain there and it fills up the, fills up the tub. And this pipe that's existing that goes out restricts the flow. So the flow out of the, out of the bathtub will not increase any more than what it is now. There, there was a situation that was created by the Lutheran Church. When they built their addition, they, they removed part of this bathtub wall. And, and when they took it, their parking lot to drain into it. And so our plans show that we need to replace that, that side of the bathroom wall to add a couple of feet of berm on the southern southern portion of this swale. That will provide the capacity and the volume that our calculations show that we need to, to allow this to operate the way it is, the way it was designed originally. I don't know if you've been out there in the rainstorms last winter or not, but when it fills up now, it actually runs into the Lutheran Park Church. And that was self inflicted by them when they, when they built their, when they built their parking lot. The traffic impact study was based on this, this property we're developing was originally a plat, a lot, the larger plat that included the, the bank and the other parcels. So this, this has gone through the process. and, and the other parcels. So this, this has gone through the process of a, of a uh, traffic impact study that was done at that point. And it, and they, at that time, they had a different type of development, but similar, similar volumes of uh, of traffic. And so then we came along, we had a, our, our client has seventeen, seventeen structures, si- seventeen sixplexes. And, and we, we used the, the um, the um, standard of the industry to determine how much, how many traffic um, volume, how many traffic trips are gonna come out of that, that unit? Of that, that development. Uh, we determined that fifty percent of the traffic is gonna come out of the northern access and go, go east. About thirty-five percent of it will come out um, to the west and go up, up Division Street. And, and our traffic consultant determined that only about five percent will come out to the south. So um, I also want to clarify that there are mutual access easements on this property that were in place from the original plat. And, and the, so those still, so, so the bank can come across this property to, to get out, this property can go. Excuse me, can go out to the west, past the bank to, to get out. So, so all those accesses, uh, all those access points from this property were, were considered in the, in the traffic im- impact setting. Did you have anything, Dan? Oh, the pathway, our client did contact the, did contact the uh, the, the joining property owners and, and didn't get any response from them. The, this bathtub swell is kind of in the way of this pathway. It's, it, it bends around the top and comes down the east side of our property. Um, I was out there this afternoon and the, the street that's to the east that would line up with this pathway, there are no sidewalks on that street um, for the first block. So, so we're not, we don't see the value or the benefit in providing a pathway where when you walk off the pathway, you're, you're not, you're gonna be walking in the street. Likewise, on the Luther Park, property, there was a there are some very nice trees that are on the property line and they have a driveway that wanders through there. Um, in order to put a pathway there to line up with, with our project, those trees would have to be removed. And I think that's why our client didn't get a return phone call from, from, from the joining property owner. So we, we do not support or, or believe that the pathway i- is a good idea. Any other questions?
Excellent.
Mr. Mayor, this, Mr. Mayor, um, if I could interrupt.
Sure, go ahead, Zach.
I apologize for not having done this earlier, but it didn't occur to me until Councilwoman Duquette had mentioned that she um, presented in the public as a citizen uh, at the previous hearing on December fifth. I looked up to make sure that it wasn't in January or after January. She was a citizen at that point. If Councilwoman Duquette, Councilman Schreiber, or yourself spoke out in favor or against this um, subdivision, I think that they should probably recuse themselves from the deliberations at this point. If they spoke out in neutral, I think it would probably depend on the tone of the um, of their conversation because any indication of bias uh, can be a problem.
True. Thank you, Zach. Um, I recall speaking out at that time and I almost certain I spoke neutral. I pointed out a lot concern, but we would still remain, retain four council members in the vote, which is
Neutral as well. And my concern was just the little wetland habitat with the
I don't have any problem recusing myself um, from further deliberations. Can I still run the meeting?
I, I think it might be best if, if, if you do recuse yourself to go ahead and have uh, Council President Rule run the final meeting. And then we can go. And I do apologize for doing this in the middle of the hearing. I wish, wish I had caught on earlier.
Melissa, can you let the record show that um, Councilman Schreiber and Councilwoman Duquette and the mayor have recused himself from further discussion on this matter?
Council President, I will add seven oh four P M.
Thank you very much. Um, is there any more from the applicant?
No, no, thank you.
Okay, and Zach, are we good to proceed now?
Uh, yes, I believe so.
Okay, uh, anything else from the other council members?
No, no.
Joel, okay, um,
No.
Thank you. Um, we will now prepare to proceed with the public hearing. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak?
Madam President, um, I'm happy to recite the additional information there that needs to be recited prior to opening the public hearing unless I would like to do.
I don't see where that, yeah, okay, recited earlier.
That part, yes.
Sure, why don't you do that for me?
Okay, no problem. As we said it earlier, um, the council president will first call on those who wish to testify in support of this application, then those who are neutral and finally those who are opposed. Again, if you wish to testify, please complete a sign up form and hand to staff. Please indicate on the form whether you are in favor, neutral, or opposed. City policy provides the presiding officer may allow, allow time to be gifted during a public hearing. I will, uh, the president, council president, uh, do you allow for that gifting option this evening? Dub, will you allow time to be gifted this evening during the public hearing?
Sure.
If you wish to gift your time to someone else, you may do so. The person gifting their time may do so only once. And the person receiving gifted time may receive only one gift for a total of up to six minutes. If you are gifted time, please state as much when you begin speaking and indicate the name of the person who gifted you their time. Otherwise, each speaker will have up to three minutes. Council President, you may uh, now uh, open the public hearing.
Okay, is there anybody who wishes to testify in support?
Madam President, no one has signed up to testify in support.
Is there anyone who is neutral who has signed up?
Madam President, no one has signed up to speak as neutral.
And finally, is there anybody who's signed up who is opposed?
Madam President, no one has signed up to speak who is opposed to this project. We have not received any indication from the public who wishes to speak on this item at all.
Okay, thank you. Um, and I guess we've already gone past. Are there any members of the public who haven't testified who wish to do so? Doesn't seem like we have anybody who is, um, I don't think there needs to be a rebuttal. Nobody to rebut. Um, does council have any further questions for the applicant?
No.
Okay, then I'm going to close the public hearing. The public hearing is now closed. Um, council may ask questions of staff during deliberation. Sample motions have been provided on the dais. Um, does anybody have further deliberation?
No.
Joel? Okay, thank you. Um, does council wish to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I move that the Sandpoint City Council, after consideration of the criteria and relevant standards by Idaho code and Sandpoint city code, approve the three lot final plat originally approved by the city council by the city application P S two, three dash zero, 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 three. The council finds that West Point Plaza's LLC proposed final containing one less lot than the four approved by the council complies with all conditions of approval, substantially conforms to the approved preliminary plat and directs the mayor to sign on our behalf.
Is there a second?
Second.
The only thing I would like to change in the motion, I apologize for interrupting Councilwoman President, is that Councilwoman President should cha- sign it and not
Oh, I'm sorry, on, on behalf, uh, directs the council president to sign on our behalf.
Okay, um, this will be a real call vote.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Wool?
Yes.
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Sprow?
Yes.
Madam President, the motion passes.
Thank you.
With no old business on the agenda, we'll move on to the new business and the final item this evening with a proposal, proposed amendment to the city sign code. I will yield the Florida Community Planning Development Director, Jason Welk.
Okay, good evening. Council, let me make sure I get my green shared here. We are going to look at a proposed amendment to our sign code tonight. Let's go share that. For which I have a staff report. Okay, um, you heard me talk earlier tonight about a new program to do some public art on our city owned big belly waste disposals. I also referenced the existing and I, I think successful public art project that we unveiled two or three or four years ago now with the wrap of utility boxes featuring local artists' works. In uh, considering the next phase of this project with the big bellies, uh, we were brought, it, it, we, we, we realized that our existing sign code actually prohibits what's called off premise signage, um, which is uh, defined in my staff report here. Um, the uh, the purpose, of course, of off, of a ban on off premise signage is to uh, prevent local businesses from advertising all over town to try to minimize the amount of clutter and advertising on our public rights of way and on uh, private properties that don't belong to the business or um, that the business leases for their operations. So there's great intentions, but one of the unintended consequences is that some of our own public art projects that are supported by sponsors are, are actually um, uh, against city codes. So the, 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 there, there was also an impetus for this pro- proposed amendment from um, one of our partners in the community, the school district, which is interested in um, improving some of the uh, sports facilities in, in ways that the city does not currently have the budget to do. Uh, specifically, the uh, the school district's sports program is looking to install a scoreboard for the baseball and softball fields, which currently there isn't one. So if you go watch baseball, you have to follow the game on a, a smartphone app to see what the score is or just ask somebody who's been paying closer attention to you, which I found out as I went and watched some of the baseball tournament last weekend. Um, so the school district has an opportunity to um, get some sponsorship support for a scoreboard at Memorial Field and, and our current sign code does not allow for such a, an opportunity. So we are bringing the proposed amendment to you tonight, which would basically add one exemption to our sign code prohibiting off premise signs and the proposed language is here on the screen for you. So we would add, there, there are a lot of exemptions to our sign code. Um, I believe that this is adding a uh, uh, what is it? I think P A B C D all the way down to L M N O P. There, there are gonna be plenty of exemptions to our sign code, but the one that we would like to add tonight would allow for off, off premise signs that may contain letters or numbers for the purpose of supporting public art, parks amenities, or recreational activities and programs at city facilities. So the um, the idea, in, in fact, another example of our sign code currently being violated is there's some uh, Spalding or Wilson signage at the Traverse Tennis Course. This has been up for as long as I've ever played tennis there. Technically in violation of our sign code. We can't have, even though those uh, those groups provide our, our school tennis programs with lots of free equipment. So we're looking for ways to increase opportunities for recreation, for, for sports team sponsorship. This might include um, uh, sponsorship of, of uniforms for city rec league programs, the track teams and things like that uh, that the city organizes, as long as they operate on city premises, uh, city facilities. Um, so that is the gist of it for you. It's um, co- city code nine, six, sixteen is the sign code where currently off premise signage with business logos on them are prohibited. This is not opening the floodgate for off premise signage on private property around town. It's, it's very explicit for public art, parks amenities, recreation activities, or programs at city facilities. We're not drastically changing code in a way that's gonna transform the skyline of Sandpoint with billboards and signage everywhere. That is remaining intact. So if you have any questions, the staff recommendation is to approve the proposed ordinance amending city code nine, six, fifteen to include an additional exemption from the sign code.
Councilman Welker, I, I just, uh, my only comment is I believe it's nine, six, thirteen
Is it?
permitted and prohibited signs. Um, uh, not, not the section that, um, there's a scribner's error there. So uh, just confirm that before you uh, the language is right, the intent is right, but um, confirm that before you uh, actually, public or correct. I'm looking at nine, six, thirteen permitted and prohibited signs. That goes into the prohibited signs. Off premise si- signage is nine, six, thirteen, B six, uh, B seven, B six.
And we're actually not changing that. Off premise signage is still a prohibited form of signage. We're, we're amending the code that articulates the exemption so that that way off premise signage is still prohibited.
Excellent.
Except for off premise signage explicitly for public art, for supporting public art, public recreation amenities in, in publicly owned facilities.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, so we are not repealing any language here. We're adding language, which would allow for an additional exemption.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question then. What would the school be doing?
Um, there, well, nothing's set in stone yet. There's still, we're still working with the school on what this um, opportunity might look like. But essentially, a, a baseball scoreboard is around sixteen thousand dollars, believe it or not. I would have think, thought you'd flip, flip things. But these things are controlled remotely from, you know, somewhere. And i- if you think about the football scoreboard that we have at Memorial Field, it would be of a similar style. I think it's the same manufacturer. So it's a fairly significant installation. The school district doesn't have sixteen thousand dollars laying around, but they do have local businesses that have offered to pay for that in exchange for a small sign underneath the scare, scoreboard that says something like this sign is powered by blank with the local business name on it. So um, any signage that accompanies these sorts of things have to be approved by the city's community planning and development department. Um, we're still gonna have sign standards that have to be followed. Um, a sign can't, a, a sign with the company logo on it cannot be bigger than the scoreboard. It has to be attached to the scoreboard, for example. We're still working out those details. But that's specifically what kind of brought this to our attention was that um, yeah, we want to support the school district to have a scoreboard for baseball in a city park. No, we can't pay for it. And we also understand the school district's extremely tight for money. So if there's local businesses that are willing to support that sort of project, this is the, the proposal here is, is the city willing to allow that sort of support for public art and public recreation and sports amenities?
To let those signs, those saying who voted
Yeah.
on the scoreboard, not
Right, not elsewhere in the park. No, and that, those are the details that would be worked out, right? If you're, if you're sponsoring, um, youth tennis programs at the James E Russell Building, you don't get to put your name on the front of the building. There might be a little sign that gets to be put on one of the curtains behind the courts with your, your company's logo on it because you provided fifty tennis rackets and a thousand
Places.
Right.
Thanks.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Councilwoman President.
Um, so I guess my concern is by doing this without the guidelines being in place first and there's the potential to open up the floodgate. Um, and people would have the impression that anything can be allowed. I know you're saying you have to improve it, but I almost feel like the horses in, or the carts in front of the horse, is that what they say? I don't know. I didn't grow up with a horse. Um, maybe I shouldn't have gone there. Um, so my concern would be um, percentage of the surface relative to the overall size of the scoreboard. Um, I think we have enough of corporate America in such and such stadium and you just can't get away from it. And I guess, um, I think maybe my interpretation, but a lot of other people who live in Sandpoint or have been here for a long time is that it's one place where you can't get away as a, as a vacation town away from all that stuff. So I would like to see um, something that comes back to us that really clearly defines exactly what we're saying. I think our utility box wraps that have something very small and indiscreet are incredibly appropriate. They fade right into the art themselves. Um, so I, I think we would get pushback from the public if there starts to be an excessive amount of stuff pasted everywhere you go in Sandpoint. So that would be my concern with this. Um, and I don't know, maybe Zach has something to say relative to passing this change in our code before we have all of our outline ready to go for people coming to take advantage of, of this exemption.
Um, council, um, before Zach Johnson, Councilwoman uh, Rule, that I, I think you bring up a good point. This is uh, uh, Jason mentioned, this, this is also probably going to come before you, like for the scoreboard sign, um, without naming the entity. There is a, a business that has proposed that they could support a scoreboard. My thinking was, we can't uh, We can't individually just say one company gets to have the opportunity to sponsor the scoreboard. So I would imagine as this does evolve, we would also, if the council decides, we would open this up to basically any company. In Sandpoint to to make a proposal to sponsor the scoreboard. So that's just a little added color and I agree with you. We should probably have some standards in place, maybe. Before we allow this, but I'll defer to Zach there.
I I I mean, I think from a legal standpoint, it's kind of more up to you guys. I think from a legal standpoint. You can pass this ordinance and then set the standards, or you can set the standards at the time of passing the ordinance. So I'm going to leave it in your hands.
So if somebody, if this were approved, Zach, and somebody came in and said they wanted a ten foot sign. We have the discretion to say no, even if we don't have the standards for what the size limit on the sign might be.
I mean, I guess if I'm understanding the ordinance correctly, it's only for. You know, that's a good point. I think. I would probably try to avoid that situation. But maybe maybe now that I'm thinking thinking it through, I think maybe that is a a good idea to have the standard set at the time we set the ordinance so that. The rare possibility that that happens, we can avoid it.
Other council questions?
Mister Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilman Schreiber.
Yeah, I I would echo what the other two just said. If you scroll back up to H. I noticed that H. Had specific language defining how requests would be handled. And I thought that that was possibly something that we could. Mirror in this.
Good. Yeah, it's a good suggestion.
And I I also had the the question of, is this going to be a formal bid process? Or, you know, how do we avoid, you know, appearance of favoritism? Somebody. Snags up the scoreboard and then ten other people step up and say, oh, I would have taken that if it was offered to me. Yeah, so.
Right, you know, that's.
I'm generally inclined to approve this, but I do think there are some details that need to be worked out.
Yeah. Well, we do have a a Parks and Rec Commission that's going to be forming later this summer. Perhaps this could be one of their. Sort of like the Arts Cultural Historic Preservation Commission has to approve requests for murals. Maybe this could be something that goes through. An advisory role of the Parks and Rec Commission.
Yeah, and P and Z typically works on the sign code ordinance. And I guess, I don't know, it would it would be a non-binding. What did we, what's the word? Not consent, but.
Informed consent.
Informed consent is is the council, I mean, before we go down and spend staff time working this up. Let me ask this, are there any council members who would have a hard time potentially opening our parks up to signage, even? Very modest signage? Because if 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 that's the feeling, I don't want to waste a bunch of our time pursuing this.
And I should clarify, that was kind of, we're we're trying to put the horse before the cart by doing this, because I'm not, I I it's not really worth our effort. If the council's not open to having this sort of public-private partnership in our public realm. That that was the intent tonight. The intent was not to immediately open the floodgates and say, okay, who wants to put a sign up at Traverse Park or at? City Beach with your logo. I mean, everybody would like it. But yeah, the the idea is there are existing programs that are, I think, ve- very valued in the community. And potential collaborations in the horizon that could bring additional amenities at no cost to the city. But it by no means was it to say that we're not going to have standards. We're not going to, you know, work with the our partners like the school district and and potential sponsors.
Mister Mayor, have a suggestion, if I may?
Sure, please.
I would suggest that maybe we turn this into a non-action item, but we direct staff. If everybody's amenable to. Modest.
Sponsorship.
Sponsorship or code, or to bring something forward to us so we know what we're looking at before we approve it. Is that making sense? That we could remove this as an action item, have a direction to staff.
I think we would probably table it.
Postpone table, yeah.
I guess, I I appreciate that, Councilman Rule. Is there, is there anyone? Who would never ever consider allowing sponsorships of facilities or amenities by corporations or businesses? Is anyone like?
Mister Mayor, Mister Mayor, sorry. Not sure my videos won't allow me to share. I'm not sure it says. Anyways, just so you know. Jason, did you say earlier that there there's a Wilson sign at the tennis courts at Traverse Park?
There's like a mesh sign hanging on the fence there. It's been there as long.
Is that because Wilson helps the tennis?
I'm guessing the the middle or high school tennis program just hung that up at some time in the past and never asked anybody in the city about it.
Oh, okay. I just wasn't sure if they actually donated money. It sounded like you said they donated gear to the to the school district.
I assume something was given in exchange for hanging their banner at one of our courts.
Oh, okay. But we don't know that for sure.
I don't know. I don't know for sure.
Okay, that that's helpful. I just thought, hey, they're corporate. They're giving money to the school district. I wouldn't want to entirely. Take that off the table, although I'm definitely in favor of local before that, but I mean, the reality is there are corporations that aren't. That do donate and help out a lot and they have a lot of money if they're willing to help out local programs. So I personally. Don't want to see that completely off the table, especially if nobody else steps up. Just some thoughts.
Can I ask a question of counsel, Mister Mayor?
Sure.
Is the proposal that we come back with ordinance language that lays out a standard for signage?
That's my understanding.
Or just references a standard that can be articulated somewhere else.
I think we'll want the prepared sort of ordinance so we could adopt one both concurrently. My only concern is if we adopt something like this. If you got a real, you know, an interesting person or business, they could say, I want a twenty foot sign. Where do you get the the basis to? What's the standard for not allowing a twenty foot sign?
Well, my my only concern is that there, we don't really know what types of sponsorship opportunities might come up. So if we were to start doing, let's say, like dimensional standards, the signs cannot be this much larger than this or that. This this could get become very clunky code language. If we say something like. Councilman Schreiber pointed out in H, you know, all requests for sponsor signage. Must be reviewed by the parks, sorry, the Community Planning Development Department in partnership with the Parks and Rec Commission. You know, that we don't have, we don't dictate how large murals can be at the city, but we say murals are allowed as long as they're approved by city staff and and the commission. I'm just one, like, we have. Hundred and thirty acres of parks, opportunities could come in literally almost an infinite variety of sizes from the. S T C logos we currently have, which are about this size, to, you know, an eleven foot wide baseball scoreboard. Do we say no sign maybe larger than eleven feet? Because that is what we think might be the largest sign, eleven by two feet. Like when we start laying out like specific standards that have to be followed, it. Becomes very cumbersome in in our code versus a general standard that all signs must be approved or approved by the CPD department. Or the Parks and Rec Commission, something like.
I I'm I'm super. Just, I I guess I understand that, having written the current sign code, it took more than a year. It's lots of meetings with the lawyers and lots of meetings with the planning commission to come up with a legally defensible sign code. I guess my my preference would, I would defer that to you and the planning commission and the city attorneys to work through what you think is the best. Legally defensible and sustainable path for this and bring it back to us for consideration.
Good.
Mister Mayor, if I might, just again to go back to maybe not, like you say, making it cumbersome by saying we can't have a sign this large or we can't have a sign that large. But for instance, in relation to a scoreboard purchase, there's only a percentage of their logo. That can go on the art piece. And maybe that goes through the commission and the commission as a whole. Makes a decision on what they think is reasonable. That would make me me feel much more comfortable where we kind of have an objective sort of thing. But it doesn't hinder the actual artistic process significantly, if that makes sense. Because leaving it wide open. I think. A lot of people would be unhappy with half of the sign, you know, like or with the the advertisement becomes larger than the actual. Reason for having the scoreboard to begin with. That's all.
Excellent. Is there a motion, any other comment? Is there a motion to table this?
I'll make a motion to table this.
Can I make just one?
Second, sorry.
Sorry, the motion is second. Motion by rule, second by Sparrow. Any, is there comment on a table? I'm sorry, I'm still. Discussion on a table or is it just automatically?
We'll want to postpone this. We don't have a date certain at this point, so it will be a motion to postpone.
Okay.
Okay, motion to postpone.
Second, I assume is the same.
Yes, thank you.
Any discussion on that, Melissa, for per Roberts? I don't have my Roberts rules down, or is it immediately taken action on?
You're welcome to discuss.
Any discussion on the postponement?
My only request is, again, going back to sub item four, it does say. Or or H, sorry, not H. It does say forwarded to council. With their recommendation. And I like that because it gives the public a chance to comment on it. So as you're developing this, I I just. Request that that be included as well.
Sure. I I I foresee similar language to what we see.
Yeah, and my only comment, i- i- I think you need to visit with Zach and I call sign code the third rail. Like electrocuted of land use planning. There's a lot of law that talks about content, copy, size. So we just need to really make sure that it's it's going to be defensible and Zach can help you with that. Excellent. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Mister Mayor, we'll go ahead and do a roll call.
Excellent.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Ducat?
Yes.
Counselor Spurrow?
Yes.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Mister Mayor, motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will now return to items five, six and seven on the consent calendar that were moved by Councilman Howard. Councilman Howard, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Just just a few comments. In my prior life before coming and sitting on this dais. I oversaw many, many construction projects, hundreds of millions, if not billions of dollars. I'm very, very sensitive to change orders, not necessarily from the the need for a change order. But for the fact that there are extra dollars being spent. And so I had a few questions first. So for five, six and seven, are those change orders going to take us above the budget for the projects?
So for item five, which is the SCADA upgrades project, the project itself, the reason this is coming to you. Even though it's a small change order is because the project itself was above budget. So council approved the original agreement. And then any change order is going to have to come back to council. There's funds available in the. Wastewater and sewer funding. To cover this, but it wasn't what was budgeted for this project. This project came in a lot higher than what. The estimates were given to us in the beginning. So. So yes, any change order to the SCADA project would have to come to council, even if it's ten dollars. It has to come to council. Because it's above the original budgeted amount for this project.
And my second question is, what what actions have we taken? I get the need for the change.
Yeah.
Don't disagree with that, but have we have we looked at ways to mitigate the cost? Have we gone back to the contractor and said? Where are there other opportunities to cut costs so that we don't have to add additional cost?
So this particular one is was something that was not known. When the the RFP was released, this issue was an unknown. And now that they're in the design phase and determining everything that needs to be done. And Rod in Utilities has realized that these three lift stations, the level sensors are no longer communicating. Which has caused problems over the winter. So instead of having another contractor go in and fix this. Which we could. It makes sense to include this with the SCADA project. We don't want another contractor to go in and do anything with the computer system. That is not the contractor doing the SCADA project. So this was something that they've taken on to fix. But it was something that we didn't even know was an issue until recently.
And I get that. I mean, almost any project to get into, there's an unknown. My question is. If they're still designing the system, can we go back to them and say, hey, can you find through the design ways to go mitigate this cost? Using different controllers, doing other sorts of things to go lower their cost.
So we have, we, it is not recommended that we change the specs that are in the original agreement. Because it it all has to do with the system's security. However, when they first sent over their potential change order for this. It was actually more like fifteen thousand dollars. And we went, we went back, the project manager went back through. The RFP document and said, these things were already identified in the RFP, so your price should have included this. They acknowledged that they had missed that. And so as a result, they removed that and they are absorbing those costs. That should have been seen when the RFP was originally done. They are very, we can. We definitely keep them accountable and we have made them really justify. Anything that they're bringing forward. And so far, this is the only thing that we can't ask them to absorb because it was not. Something that was identified within the solicitation process.
And and again, in my prior life, I was given a budget. I had no ability to go above it. I still had to deliver the scope.
Right.
And there's lots of ways to go do that. And so I I I don't like to hear that, well, there's other money in other pools that we can go draw from. That's not creating the discipline that I think that we want to have in the city.
I can assure you, the project manager is, keeps them extremely accountable. We do everything we can. But if there's an unknown, there's an unknown that that we have to get fixed. And and this particular issue. Creates the the problem that the, there's too much flow. And if it's not communicating, there's no alarm being sent to our staff to make sure that that is fixed. Which can create some flooding. So I mean, this is, this is a critical. These are critical pieces of equipment that have to be.
Councilman Howard, we we have had to to speak to your question, for example, Mister Welker and Maeve. On the Russell Center, there is a ton of value engineering and reworking on on those, especially those larger projects. So, you know, that's one where that same approach, this is a fixed dollar amount we have for this project, make it work. Cut out the, you know, the refrigerator, cut out the shower, whatever it is. So depending on the project, we have different, you know. Levels of application. Generally, on smaller things, we we don't invest the human capital to drill down if it's. You know, a thousand bucks, because you could eat that up in a a meeting.
Yeah, and part of what I'm emphasizing is maybe resetting expectations with our contractors. Because I I will bet you that when they find a positive variance that benefits them. They don't come back to you and say, I'm going to give you money back.
We actually have had change orders that have reductions because we do expect the contractors to do that. If something is not. Being done within the scope that's in the fee schedule of the contract, then we expect a change order reducing that.
I have an example of that.
Yeah.
Our contractor brought to us a proposal to, in the in the design for the James E Russell Building, there was. Not surprisingly, a commercial water heater in the original design, because it's it's a large commercial building. But after we value engineered. Ironically showers out of the plan, Mister Mayor, we're originally going to have locker rooms with showers in there. The the team, the architects themselves, ALSC. Came to us and said, you know, without showers, you might not need this large commercial water heater. So they literally said, look, the amount of flow you're going to have, you've got. A a men's restroom, a women's restroom, and then one sink in the community room. You can get by with a residential heater. You can get by with a residential heater. That saved us over twenty-five thousand dollars on that project. It literally went from like a thirty-five thousand dollar water heater to a ten thousand dollar water heater. And that was not something that Maeve found in her investigation. That was brought to us by our partners at ALSC because they were, they're keenly aware that we're extremely tight on budget for that project. So that was a, a change order that came to you previously that actually deducted money. Now, you may not have remembered it because there are probably change orders that added to that as well, but there are additions and subtractions with, with all these changes.
I think it's a super valid point, uh, uh, Councilman Howarth, especially as we enter into this massive wastewater plant. Um, I just want to speak to the other two, six and seven. Uh, six is um, for a comp plan. Um, the contract and the agreement was to deliver the comp plan. Um, by nature of the process, it's been extended. There's a lot of changes. Um, so that's simply to have them, you know, PDF it, change the imagery and bring that up to uh, a point where we can deliver it. And then finally, seven, that was for our, uh, you know, uh, planning contract planner. Um, we took a kind of a guess at how much work was going to be coming through this summer when we brought them on, when we lost our two planners. Um, and the good and the bad, the work's been um, significant. Um, and as a result, they've, they've uh, gone through that first portion of the budget. So um, this will get us through until our new, uh, more than get us through until our new planners are on board, one of which is coming uh, next week and the other, um, July fourteenth, I believe.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council or, uh, Councilman Howarth?
No.
If not, I would entertain a motion to approve um, items five, six, and seven on the consent. That's change order number one to SCADA. Um, fifth amendment to service agreement with Logan Simpson's for the comp plan. And uh, first amendment to agreement with Jacob's Engineering for Planning Services.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dick, second by Rule. Any discussion? So be a roll call vote.
Council Howarth?
Yes.
Council Spurrow?
Yes.
Council Dick?
Yes.
Council Duquette?
Yes.
Council Schreiber?
Yes.
Council Rule?
Yes.
With no further business on the agenda, the meeting is adjourned at seven forty-two PM.